Okay, we welcome back our viewing public and we are reconvening this afternoon, the seat earlier this, the workshop from earlier this evening. And the remaining topic is our 2020-21 plan updates. And we begin with our Chief of Staff, Dr. Mark Bergen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening to you, Vice Chair Melnick, Board Members, Dr. Spence, and our viewing public. As the Chair indicated, my name is Mark Bergen. I'm Chief of Staff, and I'm delighted to be with you again this evening, along with other members of our senior staff, to provide some updates for the continued 2021 school On this presentation overview slide, you'll see that I will begin this workshop with a quick summary of the announcement from the Governor just this last week regarding his desire to have the safe reopening of schools. I'll also circle back and briefly repeat some of the highlights from the updated guidance from the VDH, also in support of safely reopening schools for in-person instruction. And then I will review the percent positivity for the Eastern Region over the past five weeks. I'm then going to invite Mary Shaw to join us by Zoom, and Mary will share an update on our ongoing efforts to increase our contact tracing capabilities. She will be followed by Mr. Tommy DiMartini, our Director of Safe Schools, who will be providing an update on the safety team inspections that have been occurring in our schools, as well as an update on vaccinations for teachers and staff. Mr. DiMartini will be followed by Dr. Rogers, who will provide updates on our ongoing efforts to support students with both in-person and virtual learning. And the final presenter for the evening will be Dr. Robertson, who will provide some feedback for you that we've received from elementary school teachers and sixth-grade teachers on their return to the classroom with their students for in-person instruction. And Dr. Robertson will give you a reminder of our intended timeline for the return of our remaining secondary students before we then turn and open the floor up to your questions. So if you were not able to tune in last week, during a press conference on Friday, Governor Northam did announce that he was calling for all K-12 school divisions in the Commonwealth to make in-person learning options available in all school divisions by March 15th. The Governor, in his press release, cited some of the very same research which we have previously shared with the Board and the community that indicates how in-person learning can be safely accomplished when proper safety mitigations are in place. The Governor also announced that his administration will be working to support local decisions around expanding summer learning opportunities. Now, just to be clear, while summer learning will not be mandated by the Governor, he is in the process of determining additional resources to support extended learning for students throughout the summer. Our central support team has already started planning for a very robust offering of summer school options for our families, and we look forward to sharing more of that information with you in detail at a future Board meeting. In his press conference, the Governor also referenced the updated guidance from the Virginia Department of Health, which was shared with you at the last Board meeting, so this slide might look familiar to you. While the new guidance continues to emphasize the importance of monitoring community transmission and the effectiveness of health and safety mitigations, the greatest change in the updated guidance is that community transmission alone should not solely dictate decisions about in-person learning. So while we are no longer using the Eastern Region metrics as a sole decision point, as we did throughout the fall and into early January, and in keeping with this updated guidance from the VDH, we will continue to monitor and report on our division website the level of community transmission for the Eastern Region. So with that, this is a graph of the seven-day moving average for the percent positivity in the Eastern Region since the start of January. This information, of course, is reported online by the Virginia Department of Health, which is linked off of our division website. As shown on the graph, the seven-day moving average at the beginning of this month was 18.4% for the Eastern Region. It then increased to 21.7% around the 6th of January. Fast forward to the time of your last Board meeting on the 26th of January, and the percent positivity had declined to 16.7%. Since then, it has continued to decline slightly, and over the past week has remained relatively flat at its current rate of 15.9%. This time, I would like to invite our Coordinator of Health Services, Mary Shaw, to join us via Zoom, so that she can share for you herself an update on our ongoing efforts to improve our contact tracing capabilities. Mary, are you with us?
Thanks, Dr. Bergen. Good evening, School Board Chair, members, and Dr. Spence. This evening, I want to provide a brief overview of the current status of our contact tracing process. The Virginia Beach Department of Public Health Team has been dedicate, a team has been dedicated to support the school division in our contact tracing process for employees and students. This team is accessible seven days a week. A weekly review and evaluation meeting between myself and the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health Team is scheduled and takes place each Wednesday. We are meeting our goal to complete each contact tracing investigation case reported to us within 24 hours. That includes communicating directly to identify close contacts with guidance, the distribution of a general notification, and reporting to the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health Team. The Virginia Beach City Public School Contact Tracing Team includes myself, a nursing specialist, five school resource nurses, 30 CHKD athletic trainers, the school nurses and clinic assistants in schools, five additional school nurse substitutes. The after-hours and weekend team has a pool of approximately 25 nurses scheduled based on need. Should a school nurse not be able to work a case due to nursing tasks required in a school, support will be provided through my office. Contact tracing investigations are a team effort. The case, the caseworker working the case is supported by principals or supervisors in support buildings and my team leaders. So that's pretty much what I have to let you know about contact tracing. I think it's going extremely well. I'm very proud of everyone that is working on our casework and our collaboration with public health and their commitment to work with us, their epidemiologists, their case investigators that are dedicated specifically to the schools. So I'm here if you have any questions that you might want to ask.
So do we want to go through all the presentations first, or I'm seeing a yes. So Ms. Shaw, if you would hang with us, we appreciate it. We have Mr. DiMartini now.
Yes, next slide. Yes. The Office of Safe Schools was able to conduct training of 17 former school administrators, teacher, and a fire marshal in order to create teams of COVID assessment teams. We created nine teams. We tasked the assessments of 55 of the elementary schools and old donation school during the first week that we returned to face-to-face instruction. Most of the teams responded to at least two schools per day during the week of 2-2 through 2-5. The COVID Safety Assessment Teams successfully conducted assessments in all 56 schools, and the overall feedback has been overwhelmingly positive from the members and our principals. Next slide. The example is a form that the Office of Safe Schools has created that our safety assessment teams use as they go out, as they go through the buildings. You can see it's divided up into different categories. Lobby and the front desk area, office area, classrooms, entranceways, exterior building, exterior grounds, et cetera. The teams assess the building and report back with what they observe. The vaccine update. The transition from VAMS, which is the Vaccine Administrative Management System, to our new PrEP Mod program happened recently. VAMS was originally put out to all of our employees, but we transitioned recently to PrEP Mod, and PrEP Mod seems to be a much better program. Over 8,000 of our employees have been uploaded at this point to vaccines. We had to transition over 1,100 employees into the PrEP Mod system from VAMS due to various different reasons of the initial batch of the 8,000. But we're confident now that we are progressing and getting everybody signed up for the vaccine. A large percentage of our employees received their first dose of the vaccine back in mid-January, and we anticipate that the next wave of vaccines will be done by the end of February.
Thank you, Mr. DiMartini. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. This afternoon, well, this evening, I'll provide you with a high-level update on some of the success that we are seeing in virtual learning and the ongoing support that we are providing to student, staff, and families. And as was shared with you during our last time, we are focused on providing high-quality teaching, learning, and support for all of our students, and will continue to do so whether they are learning face-to-face or virtually. This week, I want to lift up some of the support and successes that we're seeing with virtual learning and what our plans to continue to strengthen the support, as well as strategies that are provided for our virtual learners, and especially our youngest learners, students considered at risk, and our students with disabilities. So I do want to point out that if we continue to frame our situation that impending learning loss will take place virtually, it places us in a position that's challenging to defend to our students, staff, as well as to our families. So instead, the approach that we're taking at Virginia Beach is acknowledging that we did have gaps in learning prior to COVID and working as hard as we can to continue to decrease those gaps and keep gaps from widening, and doing so by accelerating meaningful teaching and learning, focusing on high-quality professional development, especially on Mondays, and providing ongoing support for students, staff, and families as we focus on their well-being. So when schools closed last March, our curriculum teams and specialists in partnership with our instructional coaches and teachers began examining the research and attending professional development by experts in the field. And we began to plan support for our professional learning, instructional coaching, strategies, as well as curriculum that's grounded in the research. We have some wonderful examples of authentic, meaningful teaching and learning that's taking place virtually from a student who's at Betty F. Williams, and her name is Zomani Walter, and she's taught by Ms. Keltner. Zomani was featured recently on Channel 13 News as part of KJ's Kids Series, and I'd like to share the clip with you to help shape context for the rest of the presentation.
Let's meet our newest member of KJ's Kids for our local students, Sean in STEM. Meet Zomani Walter from Betty F. Williams Elementary. Fifth grader Zomani Walter is shooting for the stars and the moon with her STEM project. These are some photos of her working on a class project to build a spacecraft habitat said to launch for a mission on the moon. Zomani's teacher, Amy Keltler, says the idea stems from a goal of NASA to make a lunar base to research the moon's surface and also to become a hub to lift off to other planets. Keltler says she's impressed by Zomani's creativity and says it's quite incredible, perhaps even out of this world, if you ask me. She even designed legs for safe and soft landing, but to Zomani, it's not rocket science.
My lunar habitat has about four to, four to five rooms, and in different rooms, you have different rooms like greenhouse, workout room, entertainment room, and bathroom.
So they're all currently in the process of building their own lunar habitats of what could be beneficial for astronauts on the moon.
If you would like to become a KJ's Kids, show us what you're working on. Let us see your STEM project. Email us, PICS, P-I-C-S, at WTKR.com. Send a photo of yourself and some contact info. For now, meteorologist KJ Jacobs, News 3.
So we're thankful for students like Zomani. So the research on teaching and learning virtually, our planning, as well as the feedback that we constantly receive from multiple stakeholders, has informed our professional learning that we provide, and it's also informed curriculum development, as well as the enhancements that began last March. Unfortunately, there's not enough time for us to share all the curriculum enhancements that have been made and continue to be made, but I'll highlight just a few of them. Some of the curriculum enhancements we've made include building assessments in Schoology, which we've been doing for quite some time now. We've added additional digital texts. We've purchased new resources, new resources such as Storia, easy for me to say, in order to provide more eBooks for our teachers and students to read at home. We've enhanced current lessons with easy-to-push-out virtual resources, and even developed an entire webpage within our small group reading curriculum website for virtual instructional resources for staff to utilize during small group reading instruction, so that we can ensure that the resources are available and aligned to the science of reading, which is part of the letters training that many of our staff have taken. As was shared at your last Board meeting I attended, we realized that all learning is social and emotional, and we continue to make this a priority in all content areas by embedding opportunities to highlight and connect core content areas to Castle SEL standards. And each year, to support literacy, we add additional resources to classroom inventories and school bookrooms, such as the additional SEL books for read-aloud classroom activities. And we continue to leverage morning meetings and closing circles as we recognize the importance of ensuring that all elementary classrooms create intentional time for SEL and team-building social experiences. Now regarding math, and as was shared with you during your last January Board meeting, our math and content teams have been coaching and supporting instruction and assessment in our schools by co-teaching in person and virtually, and making adjustments to math curriculum to better support teachers. For example, within the curriculum, resources are updated regularly to allow for easy access by both teachers and students. And more specifically, every unit has a readily available linked virtual manipulatives. A screenshot is shown on the top right of this slide. Go Math digital resources and digital math routines templates. Updates have been made to Number Talk resources, as well as instructional videos that teachers can use for their reference. We've also created a mathematics family resources site, and there's a screenshot located in the bottom middle of that slide. The developing math community module was added to all grade levels this year, and that was done to help teachers both virtually and face-to-face build a safe, equitable learning environment for all their students. And that model highlights for teachers where SEL actually lives in instruction on a daily basis, so it's not seen as an additional thing. Our social studies curriculum has also been updated with many digital versions of resources, links to digital resources, and enhancements to perform, to performance tasks. And our elementary science curriculum modifications and enhancements have been made to support virtual learning have also been ongoing. For example, 15-minute inquiries as simple self-guided tasks that allow students to engage with science content in meaningful ways from home. We've always been forced, we've also been fortunate to be able to leverage CARES funds to support ordering home learning kits that are used for art and music. And a sample of one of the art kits is shown in the bag on the bottom left of that slide. And as I transition to sharing a little bit about the successes and supports at secondary, we acknowledge that teaching in general is rewarding and challenging at the same time, and teaching virtually only compounds that. More often than not, you hear about the many challenges that are associated with teaching and learning virtually. And we wanted to make sure that we share just a brief synopsis of genuine conversation from one of our middle school teachers, Ms. Houchens. She's at Kempsville Middle School and is sharing her thoughts about how learning is going virtually for her.
So it really meant changing all of the tools that has been, have been in my toolbox for six years. It required extensive work. It required lots of hours. However, I feel the results were really good. You keep hearing people say this virtual learning is not working for kids. Well, I am the subject matter expert in my classroom. I'm the person assessing, and I can tell you that I had, I would say I had 95% of my kids were rock stars, and they, they accomplished what they needed to accomplish, and we still maintained high standards. I have never been more connected to a group of kids as I was this past semester. There was something about this environment that helped you be closer, and I, and we have talked about it, other teachers and I, and we think that it had a lot to do with the fact that one of the things we didn't deal with is discipline. You know, the kids were present, and we were actually able to have a lesson, and it was meaningful because we weren't messing around with all of the side stuff that sometimes we have to deal with in a face-to-face class. And it was just such a special connection. And I will tell you right now, I had 24 11- and 12-year-olds taking the eighth-grade SOL, and 23 of them passed. Well, I think that being in this pandemic, which none of us has ever dealt with, you know, people my age, people even my parents' age, we have never dealt with this before. And I feel like we all have a responsibility. Nobody gets a free ride on this, and unfortunate, and it's nobody's fault, you know, it's not the school's fault, it's not the parent's fault, it's not the kids' fault, but we all have to take responsibility in making it work. This is called resilience. Okay, what are you going to throw at us today? Okay, we got it, we'll handle it, and, you know, bring it on. If now we have to switch everything to electronic, and we have to figure out how to make that work, well, I'm going to need all of the players to also have that same attitude that, yeah, we'll make it work, and we did make it work, and it was so incredible. I've never been emotional saying goodbye to a class. You know, by June, you're worn out, and you're, you know, you're sad to see that group go. But this time, when our kids left, I have, I can tell you, I've talked to several teachers, and we were close to tears losing this group because we were so, it was such an intimate connection. I'm going to say it one more time. I had 11-year-olds that showed up and accomplished a pre-algebra course that is, a fifth grader going to an eighth grader, and they did that online, and they, they, they killed it. It was really impressive.
So we thank Ms. Houchens for her honest account of where she is with virtual learning. So commensurate support for virtual learning and successes have been realized at middle and high school levels. We've held citywide roundtables via Zoom to allow teachers the opportunity to collaborate by subject area, to share ideas, resources, best practices, as well as SEL strategies in order to support virtual learning, and we will continue to do so. So some examples of success are increased implementation of professional learning communities, language arts collaboration. For example, integrating feedback and learning is successful at Kempsville High School. At Lynnhaven Middle School, literacy cultures worked collaboratively with teachers to implement feedback loops for using evidence in their writing. And at Bayside Middle School on the sixth-grade campus, teachers like sixth-grade English teacher, Ms. Loane, are leveraging varied classroom structures to engage students throughout the virtual class time. Little things like frequently asking students to use cameras on and cameras off. That strategy is used often to enhance student engagement, as well as participation. In addition to the improved sense of collaboration at the middle school level, we've also noticed an increased use of small group instruction as a means to support students. So for example, at Princess Anne and Corporate Landing Middle Schools, they've done an excellent job with modeling small group instruction virtually. Authentic learning experiences done virtually are definitely taking place in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Lastly, I'd like to share success associated with technical and career education. Our students continue to take industry credential assessments remotely. While some tests require a student to come into a building during Term One, 5,182 remote tests were given. Virtual class cams were installed at the tech center and at the ATC to support virtual learning. This four-camera system allows instructors to bring the equipment of the CTE lab into their virtual classes. The top photo provides an idea of what students would see. The teacher can give a wide shot of the camera, of the classroom, and also close-ups of the board, the working surface of a machine, as well as the control board. The teacher then uses a stream deck to toggle between the camera, cameras for the students that are at home. All CTE teachers, centers, and middle schools and high schools were provided with Bluetooth headsets with a microphone in order to allow them to move around the room as they teach a mixture of Option 1 and Option 2 students. Also, our middle and high school teachers were able to request an additional webcam with a tripod to help set up their labs at the comprehensive schools. And lastly, to support virtual learning, materials kits were created for students to use at home in their learning. In the bottom photo, Mr. Wright, ATC Engineering Design Enable Architecture Teacher, and Ms. Hess, also an ATC teacher, are distributing books and drawing boards and toolkits and other materials for classes. Kits were also created for other classes. For example, middle school team leading sewing kits were provided for students in those courses. Now I'll touch this briefly on our work with SEL, and as I shared with you at your January Board meeting, we continue to embed SEL in our learning. Our counselors continue to do a tremendous job in supporting students and staff by conducting SEL lessons and activities in classes and supporting advisory in our secondary schools. Our behavior intervention specialists are also supporting schools by providing professional development, as well as resources. So for example, the BISs, is what we call them, conducted a PLC series called Establishing Healthy and Productive Boundaries in Digital Learning. They've also done things like create and provide visual, virtual behavior supports like reward boards, feeling charts, check-in sheets, and using Jamboard, as well as other Our Office of Programs for Exceptional Children and Staff continue to support teachers in providing virtual specially-designed instruction, or SDI. Instructional specialists have focused their support on new special education teachers teaching in the virtual environment. The delivery of special education services and the collection of data in the virtual environment certainly continues. As we've previously shared, the CARES Act funds were used to purchase materials to support our students with significant disabilities whose parents selected Option 2 or virtual learning. Schools will receive a blue tub that's shown on the bottom right-hand side of this slide for each student who has served in our AAF and FAF classrooms. Those materials to support their virtual learning will be helpful. Examples of the items that are in the tub are adjustable laptops, timers, sensory fidgets, adaptive scissors and pencil grips, as well as sandpaper letters and numbers, response paddles, and adaptive mice. Our occupational therapists sent home learning packets, as well as materials that consisted of hair gel sensory bags with mini ornaments, as well as tongue stamps and stickers to help with their fine motor skills. Our speech therapists support the use of augmentative and alternative communication virtually through static and dynamic displays during virtual sessions. They also collaborate with special education teachers to support that use during instruction. I'd like to share a success story where Ms. Cosens, who is at Corporate Landing Elementary School in the ECSE program, she prepared her Option 1 students for return to face-to-face instruction by doing a lesson while wearing a mask. she prepared her Option One students for return to face-to-face instruction by doing a lesson while wearing a mask. She sent two masks homes to each student, one for the student and one for a stuffed animal friend. And although students were excited to return to school and play with their friends, she emphasized the importance of not sharing germs. And finally, to wrap up the update on the successes that we are seeing in virtual instruction, by focusing on accelerating high-quality, meaningful teaching and learning, I'll leave you with an example of the engagement that's taking place in learning at home virtually. Ms. Julie Byers, ITS, posted this brief video on Twitter of students at Parkway Elementary School engaged in virtual learning at home.
Oh, so close. I did it. Use this marshmallow power strength right here. Bam! Right there. That's how you do it.
That's how you do it. So teaching virtually is certainly a challenge, but I think we're working through it. You guys hear a lot about how it's not working, but it absolutely is working well for some and we're trying to get it right for all students, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers.
And I can tell you that works because last night after I saw that, I went home and from my hot chocolate. But I used the minis and man, those minis can really fly. So it took a couple tasks before, you know, but anyway, the dogs liked it. Okay, so thank you, Dr. Rogers. This past week, we welcomed back over 22,000 students and 3,000 staff to our school buildings. In support of this effort, my entire team spent time visiting schools to support principals, teachers, support staff, and to observe for ourselves firsthand how things were going. In addition, we ramped up our efforts to support teachers by expanding our first-ever mini non-evaluative observations of virtual classrooms as a means to show support for our teachers. Those have gone really well. This has been very rewarding and allowed us to get a closer look into the virtual learning experience for both our students and our teachers. And as we have since September, my team holds a weekly virtual check-in meeting with principals to share new information, to clarify any areas where we have observed inconsistencies, and to hear of new challenges or concerns that require discussion and solution. Finally, I ask principals to seek feedback from their staff on three questions noted here. And the purpose of this was to collect information to ensure our perceptions are accurate, to correct any misunderstandings, and to identify actions needed in real time as part of promoting transparency and continuous improvement. And here is a video that was taken by the Department of Media and Communications about how that first week went at one school. Do you have to turn that on?
We are so excited to be back in-person learning, face-to-face with our students. We missed them while they were at home and I think they missed us as well. Not only are we excited to have our kids back, but they're very excited to be here as well. They can be kids again in school and their real authentic learning is taking place all over again.
You know, being at home is not always the best way to teach because we really have to gauge their emotions and how they look at us online as opposed to being in the classroom. I could just literally, I know my students so well in the classroom, face-to-face, that I know when they need help without even asking for it.
We're able to see learning in real time. We're able to give immediate feedback when they're struggling. And the student discourse, the conversation, the, you know, they're just actively learning and it's really great to see that in-person again.
I think that, you know, teaching virtually with that Zoom camera, there are, it's a roadblock. There are definitely a lot of challenges. We're not really making the connections with each other. And just being back in the classroom, I've already seen, you know, students perk up. They're participating more. They're definitely more engaged and just excited. You can feel that energy when you walk into the room.
You can just tell by their faces and you can't see their smiles, obviously, because we were being safe and wearing our masks. But just the joy you see, they run up, they give you a little elbow, they kind of tell you how they've been and how they've missed you so much and we've missed them too.
It's awesome to be back in the building with our students and staff. We've stayed in touch as much as we can with students and staff virtually. It's just different when we're face-to-face, to be able to see their smiles, to be able to hear how they're doing, to be able to reach out with them and give them the support they need. We're just so happy to have everybody back.
The connectivity of just being in the classroom has been optimum. I feel like I'm getting the best from my students and I really want them to come back so that we can give them the best education that we can possibly give to them.
So captured on this slide are summary bullets from the qualitative and quantitative findings from over 45 schools' staff responses. Rather than read each bullet, I thought I would share teacher statements representing the overall sentiment expressed by respondents. With regards to how did the week go for you? From a middle school teacher, "It's been so nice to have discussions and interact with the students and not have to tell them to turn their camera on and unmute. The students are so lively and ready to go." From an elementary school teacher, "Seeing the students that didn't do any PE class activities while on Zoom, but when in the school building setting again, they gave 100%." And from another middle school teacher, "During lunch, I heard a student say, 'There are only half of us here and here, there are only half of us in here, but this is so much better than eating at home alone.'" With regard to how are you feeling about returning to the school building, one elementary school teacher said, "I'm very excited to see the students back in the building. After this week, I think those that may have been concerned will be less apprehensive. The measures in place and adherence to them will probably lessen their anxiety." Another said, "I think we did a great job as a staff. We are a phenomenal team." Finally, a middle school teacher stated, "Props to the cafeteria and custodial crews for running smooth lunch exchanges and keeping every surface clean." But probably the most important question to staff was what concerns do you want me as the principal to address? One elementary school teacher said, "Not all students are wearing their masks appropriately." Another said, "Can we make sure parents do not send their children to school with a fever?" Finally, one middle school teacher asked me as the principal, "Can you take a closer look at students traveling to and from the cafeteria as the lines often get long and students get too close together?" Principals then have shared with me what actions they will be taking to address each and every teacher who shared a concern and as to what changes they will be making to their processes. In closing, I must share a powerful statement from one of our most experienced and distinguished principals. "You see, as a veteran principal, I have never been more proud to be a principal than I am now. I know firsthand there are no greater rewards at the schoolhouse than the attainment of a goal through the collective efficacy of staff, in this instance, ensuring the success of our children in these unfamiliar and unprecedented times. When a staff collectively struggles and accepts the challenges to accomplish something far greater than our individual selves, great things happen for students and teachers." And I think that quote fits this board. Dr. Spence mentioned earlier as part of board appreciation, you guys have dealt with some really heavy topics over the last year, but the collective efficacy of this board is a win. So we're, we're very pleased with what's going on. And by way of reminder, we're continuing to monitor over the next couple of weeks how things are going in advance of hopefully welcoming back our middle and high school kids in grade seven through 12 on February 23rd. Not noted on this slide, but I think it's important, is we are looking at several options to safely allow for other non-athletic programs like band, chorus, theater, et cetera, to resume when students come back to in-person learning. We'll have more information to share with you about what those plans will look like in our, in my update in two weeks. At this time, we can take questions, but if I could ask the Chair for Indulgence, Ms. Shaw has an 8:30 conference call, so if we could do her contact tracing questions first, that would be great.
I don't think there'll be any argument there.
Okay, so Mrs. Anderson.
So I think this might be Ms. Shaw that may help with this, but I'm not sure, could be, I'm not sure who's gonna answer it, but we're continuing to hear that in some schools, principals are allowing students to have mask breaks in the building. Can you elaborate on why this is allowed? And if, if it is being allowed, how is the mitigation happening during this mask break time that's happening inside the buildings?
So I can come back and cover the mask break one.
Okay, alright. I didn't know for sure if she would be able to answer that or not.
Yeah, I'll take care of that one.
Okay.
Mrs. Williams.
Ms. Shaw, before you left, I just wanted to say thank you for all your work, especially in the area of this contact tracing. I was just adding up the numbers. It seems like we've got approximately about 150 folks just dedicated to this. And so I just wanted to make sure that you didn't leave without us thanking you so, thanking you so much for working with the city and for us pressing that extra help and for us to collaborate with them in order to get this mitigation area settled so that we can continue being in school because this caused us pause before. So I look forward to continuing the efforts so that these kids can remain and get back in school even more often. Again, thank you so much for your hard work.
Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Riggs from Ms. Shaw.
Ms. Shaw, what are the quarantine procedures? Can you just quickly go over that? Because there's been questions that I've received from, from teachers and parents about it. They're saying it's inconsistent from school to school. I guess you said, do you do it by case, case by case? Can you explain that real quickly, please?
The quarantine standard is the same for everybody. If you're identified as a close contact, you have to quarantine for 14 days from the last date of contact with the person who has COVID. That standard is a gold standard. Our public health department wants us to continue that standard with our employees and students right now. I understand that there's an optional quarantine standard through CDC and at this time, our local, our local public health department wants us to continue with the 14-day gold standard. They're gonna continue to watch data and see what happens with our, our students returning. But their goal and our goal is for a successful return of our kids back to in-person learning.
Okay, thank you. What I received are from several people, it's not the same guidance for all the schools. For example, some schools are quarantining the whole class and others are only quarantining the students that are sitting next to the child who tested positive for COVID-19. Is that supposed to be happening?
A close contact is determined if an individual is within six feet of the individual with COVID-19 for longer than a cumulative time of 15 minutes. Each case is individualized, but that is the standard that we use across the board when we do our investigations. I can't speak to an individual case, but there isn't anything that's particular to one case or another. The standard is applied and however it applies to that case is how it'll be, it'll be done.
Okay, and one more question. I hear that some principals are telling that their, their staff that they can disregard the self-screening after they've been vaccinated. Is that safe to do that?
If you look at the self-screening tool, you'll see that when you look at the signs and symptoms, one of the criteria is can this be attributed to another health condition or to something that is known, could be the reason for what you're experiencing. We know that there can be some symptoms post, in the 24-hour post-vaccination time period. It was important that we communicated to our staff that if they had mild symptoms, that, that pretty much occurred right after the vaccine itself and they felt that they were okay to work, that there wasn't a reason that they couldn't continue to work. If they felt that they had moderate or severe symptoms from the vaccine or they were not sure it was because of the vaccine, then certainly they would stay home.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Shaw, we have Ms. Owens and then Mrs. Melnick.
Thanks.
Hi, Ms. Shaw, this is Ms. Owens. I had a couple of questions about the timing of notifications during the contact tracing period, contacts that I guess may have been notified that occurred the week prior. Is that typically because that's when the school just was notified? And what is the turnaround time from the school being notified to the close contacts being notified?
Hi, Ms. Owens. That, the reason there would be a delay would be that, would be because when we got the report, it's possible that an individual could have symptoms and wait to test. By the time they get the test result, unfortunately, we're seeing the test results pretty quick. We could be looking, in some cases, it could have been a week. As soon as we get that report, we start the contact tracing investigation seven days a week. We work and within 24 hours and we've met that goal, we've been able to let close contacts know they were a close contact and they need to quarantine.
Okay, thank you for that. Helpful for people to understand that sometimes the, the symptoms are starting and then the individual may take a day or two or three to go and initiate the test and then another day for the results to come back. And so there can be explanations as to why, when you get that notification, the notification says you were exposed last Wednesday. And so I think it's helpful for people to, to understand and to hear that right now, we are currently meeting our 24-hour turnaround time with notification on contact tracing. So, thank you.
Are we done, Ms. Owens? Okay, Mrs. Melnick and then Mrs. Williams.
Okay, so this is a huge ask and I don't know if it can happen, but we've had thousands of teachers receive their first vaccination and we saw pictures on Facebook. Everybody was getting it done at the same time. I think what the vaccine does promise is not feeling well the, the day after the second dose. And so I'm wondering if there's any way that teachers can receive that second dose on a Friday the way they've done for, for medical professionals? So that they have the weekend to kind of muddle through those symptoms from the second dose?
I can take that one for Mayor.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so we're gonna defer that for, on hold. Mrs. Williams.
I have questions for somebody else, not for Ms. Shaw.
So I'll, so Ms. Shaw, I think you've more or less answered this, but I, I, some of this is asking for speculation as to why there are certain families and they're the ones we hear from who, who don't seem, I just don't know if the, if the answer is, because we have the information and the FAQs, we, we answer emails as they come in, but why we still have families who like to speaking to Ms. Owens' point, who just don't, still don't seem to under, understand the contact tracing? And from what you're saying, it is, you know, we've heard your explanation of what's transpiring. What, do you see anything more we as a division or school board can do to, to, I guess, to better inform and educate? Because there's some who are obviously not even going back to the self-screening tool, which makes it very clear that it's a 14-day quarantine. We had a recent email that there was an issue with a parent in the school because the school, rightly so, was saying it's 14 days and the parent's saying, well, it's nowhere in writing. And this is maybe more administrative than you as our health services coordinator. I mean, I'm sure it's frustrating for you as well as for us.
Any thoughts or comments on that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
Yeah, any thoughts or comments on that?
Yeah, I do. You know, it's difficult. You know, you turn on the news and you're listening, you're listening to your neighbors. Um, you're getting uh different information and it can get really confusing. So each time you see something, for example, CDC could um uh talks about an optional quarantine. Uh it becomes almost the standard when people are talking about it through the media and other places. So it can be difficult. We're always fighting that battle of um getting correct communication through. Uh we use the same uh sources we've always done. Um our school nurses have a good understanding of the process. So um refer them to my officer, to uh the school nurses and hopefully we can help them and answer their questions. But I think that from a communication standpoint, I think we've been pretty steady. In trying to um communicate how we do things in Virginia Beach. Uh and it's been helpful that we do stay steady on it and we're not giving different information every week.
Well, thank you for.
We all would agree too, the best, it it should be ground up and and the best communication, I think, comes from the principal in these cases. And the more that they can, and I hope that the senior staff here would validate that, that the the more. You can't, you can't communicate too often when it comes to this thing. And so however they do it with their weekly messaging. Maybe some of this should just be, you know, constantly coming from them um rather than from the top down. I know we do both and it's all, the website, of course, is is always up. Well, now it's up and running again. Uh but okay, I I'll now yield to anybody else who with your remaining five minutes um has a question for Ms. Shaw. Ms. Owens?
Hi, Ms. Shaw. I thought I was done and then I thought of something else that had come up. Um, could you speak to uh? People who have already had uh COVID uh in our schools. Um when they are exposed a second time, uh what the process is? And if they are required to quarantine or not required to quarantine? And if they are having symptoms still from the first time or how that works, that's the first part. And then my second part uh would be, uh is it possible um that? Teachers eh or staff members and parents when they are um getting their directive through the contact tracing. That their directive can come or be followed up in an email version. So that there's less opportunity for people to uh misunderstand or misinterpret. Um whatever the directive was about quarantining or not quarantining, that it's there, it's in writing. It can be referred back to both for the the school standpoint, saying that we said whatever we needed to say. And for the the family or personnel standpoint, having having it documented.
Okay, um the first question that you have is if an individual has had COVID nineteen, they've completed their. Uh ten day isolation um and they are recovering uh from their symptoms, they're improving. Uh should they have an exposure to another person with COVID nineteen? They are not required to quarantine for ninety days. Uh so they do not need to go back into a quarantine for that. Uh the second question is, um we can have uh people that have COVID nineteen. Have lingering effects of the illness. Uh they are not uh contagious if they continue with some of these symptoms. Be it a cough or or fatigue. Uh in some cases, they could even return to having a positive test. When they uh tested negative after recovery. Uh these people are not considered uh contagious and they do not need to go back into isolation. Uh this is remnants of the illness itself and and not the contagious period. Uh the last question about um uh email or written information that was um. Uh provided to uh the parents on the phone or to an employee. Uh we can certainly look at that uh in giving them something through an email. Um we can definitely look at that. We do send uh some information, some different uh CDC charts and things. When we're explaining isolation or quarantine to let them kind of know what that's about. Uh yeah, we can look at that. Did that answer your questions?
Did, and I just wanted to make sure that I say, I I recognize that uh a request like that is putting more on the plates of. The already overwhelmed situation, so I don't um diminish the the magnitude of the request that I am asking. For us to look into, but I I do think uh it would be helpful just kind of all the way around for uh reducing confusion. And misinterpretations, et cetera. And so I thank you for um looking at it.
I understand.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that.
So thank you, Ms. Shaw. And if I can uh go back to add a couple pieces to Ms. Riggs's question and then to Ms. Melnick.
Right, and if Ms. Shaw is leaving, we just want to say thank you and please let all your nurses know how much we appreciate all of you.
So, Ms. Riggs.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for everything you guys all do for us.
So you asked a question about why does it seem like some classes might, the whole class might be quarantined versus a couple of kids? Here's what I'll explain to you. It's case by case. So for example. Um when you walk into any classroom right now, there's seating charts. And when you go into the classroom, you can s- hit it, you can either look at the list of names, but you know exactly who is sitting where. So let's say there's a positive case in a class. As part of contact tracing, they will interview the teacher, they'll interview the subject and say. Who was within six feet of you at any point in time during the day? And if this particular student was isolated to their desk area throughout the day. Then any of the desks around them, well, they're three feet apart. So all the desks around them would be within six feet, okay? Um they would be asked, did you walk through the hallway? Who was around you? So it could come to pass that this one student, because of where they were seated. And as they walked to the cafeteria and came back, that they actually mingled in with more kids in the class. Which would then quarantine the entire class. However, if not, then only those students. Where the s- the infect- infected student was in, was within six feet, they would be the ones that are quarantined. So the question becomes, and we're all experiential learners, right? So I get a letter that says my, there was an exposure at in my kid's class. But uh it's been taken care of. What do I do? I have a neighbor who gets a letter, same classroom or situation. And the whole class is quarantined. Like, well, hold on, how does that make sense? The difference is in the contact tracing piece, they drill down to who was exposed for greater than fifteen minutes. Less than six feet. And which is why in our sports programs, we put our wrestlers into pods. So if there was a kid who had a positive case, he infected three other kids, not the whole team. And we s- if you recall, I said we, we encourage our coaches to split our teams into smaller groups. So if there is a case, it doesn't quarantine the whole team. So that's why there can be a difference. And so the assumption is, boy, they must be making a mistake. We're not making any mistakes. And Ms. Riggs or Ms. Melnick, you had a question related to uh can we do something about our teachers and their second dose? Or their first dose? And so Mr. Freeman works really closely with uh the city contact. And we've opened up additional um doses availability on Saturdays and Mondays for staff. The issue is, if you've got a staff member who's already made an appointment for their second dose or first dose. And it's not on Saturday or Monday, we really don't want to tell that staff member, yeah, don't go get your dose on Thursday. Go get rescheduled and go on a Saturday or Monday. That that wouldn't be appropriate for us to do. So, but there are more, um the city has made a point to try to give us more opportunities on Saturdays and Mondays.
Alright, I'm I'm, it's not the Monday, it's it it's the twenty, it's the twenty-four hours after the shot. That you can expect but on the second dose to not feel well. So, so if they got their shot on a Friday, then they'd have the weekend. It it's, I mean. I just worry about we potentially having a thousand teachers who need a day off because they're not feeling well.
Yeah, so just let you know, we uh work, we know right now, like I have all the middle school data. We have two middle schools who have, one middle school has eight teachers, one middle school has twelve teachers getting their second dose. On February eighteenth. Another high school has nine teachers getting their second dose February twenty-second. Recognizing what that could mean for the next day, um we've asked all of our principals to go ahead and get your order. Do not assign your permanent subs to any classrooms. So that right there gives you three or four bodies. Go ahead and identify your APs. After your perm subs, your APs are going in to be subs. After your APs is your student activities coordinator, then it's your school improvement specialist, then it's your library media specialist. So pre-planned, because you know that could be a possibility. Then I've partnered with Dr. Rogers and Mr. Mira. We have a whole list of people that are going to go into classrooms, PGI, student leadership, docile. Detal, HR, so that we'll be prepared and we'll know in advance if there's any schools that could potentially. Have a number of staff out. So we'll be ready.
Mrs. Weems and then Mrs. Anderson.
Oh, good. That is great, great to hear, because that was um, I haven't had COVID, but I had a pneumonia vaccine. And at twelve noon the next day, I had a high fever. I was I was out for for twelve, fifteen hours in bed, so that's great to know. Um, just a few kudos before I ask my question. Thank you, um Dr. Martini and all the work that you've done on the COVID assessment teams. I think that's a great idea and they're gonna be very helpful, definitely. And and Dr. Robinson for the um information you just gave us. Plus, I'll be anxious to hear about the extracurricular activities and the sp- you know, clubs and and all that stuff. And then Dr. Rogers, I was so glad to hear about all the um manipulatives and extra resources that are being sent home to students that have. You know, maybe some more challenging needs. Um and thank you to all the special education teachers, um because that's an area that we've been really working on. And and those packets and those blue buckets are are lifesavers for so many of these learners. Um, okay, so my question is, when will we get a plan? To see what we're gonna do after February twenty-third? You know, we heard from a lot of high school speakers tonight about how. They want to be back for four days a week. Um a lot of them do not have next fall. This is it. Um I think we need to be working on that plan right now um and and move forward to try to get these these kids back in school. Is it something that we're gonna wait three weeks and then try to get them back March sixteenth like we, like we're doing right now? Or when are we gonna get that plan? And then also, do we have a plan again to get the special programs back any sooner? That already have low numbers, um specifically ATC and career and technology. But I think it's very important for us to be working on a robust plan to get these kids back in school for four days a week. Um for the academics and we heard about all the the social stuff that goes along with it is very important. And we've heard that from doctors, we heard, we've heard it from teachers, we've heard it from students. So when are we gonna s- see that? As soon as possible, hopefully.
So, Mrs. Weems, um what what I would say right now is, we we already, we know what our plan is. So we have a plan for students to return, those who've opted for option one, grade seven through twelve to return on. February twenty-second, I think it is, whatever that day is, week of. Um, we don't have a plan beyond that to go back to four days a week until such time as the CDC tells us. Or the Department of Health tells us that social distancing requirements are no longer needed. Because until that time, we can't move past the hybrid. We don't have the physical space to do so. So, I'm not sure I properly understand how you're framing the question, because we have a plan. We're executing that plan, we're prepared to execute that plan. If you're asking, when are we going to be able to override the physical distancing requirements of at least three feet that are in place? That's not a Virginia Beach decision. That's a public health decision, that's a CDC decision. I mean, that that guidance comes there. I mean, I I don't think we override that that.
What about our special programs that we can already meet those those um, the three feet?
So our special programs, ATC Tech Center, in particular Environmental Studies Program, will, are all coming back on the same timeframe. As the other students that we've already talked about. Your microphone's not on if you want that on for the.
Are we going to though look at, um is there a possibility to look at those programs to bring those back for four days a week? Because we can probably meet social distancing for every day for this for for this classroom.
I think you're, I'm not sure that 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 prevails in terms of the logic that we could probably meet social distancing. We'd have to assess that on a classroom by classroom basis, right?
Can we look at that now so that we have that information?
So we have, we have been looking at that, which is the reason we've brought the plan forward that we've brought. But we will continue to look at the degree to which we are able to adhere to the physical distancing requirements and have students in our buildings. Yes, we will continue to look at that.
Okay, thank.
Mrs. Anderson and Mrs. Manning.
Your microphone's not on, ma'am.
My question had to do with uh these mask breaks that I'm hearing about. Can you, can you elaborate on that?
Anderson, I forgot that. Yeah, so the only time you can relax your mask is when you're eating or drinking. Okay, now, this as, this was an area that we discovered through our visits last week. There was some confusion. So we put something out to our principals. So if outside of eating and drinking, when you can take a mask break. If you are outside and you are at least six feet away, you can relax your mask. To get a mask break. But otherwise, we're not doing any mask breaks. We.
So on rainy days when they can't go out or whatever?
There's no mask breaks.
Okay, I understand. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that our principals understood that so that they're enforcing that. Okay.
So it's, so just let me clarify. Our principals understand that, but within any any school, you could have somewhere between thirty. And a hundred and twenty staff. And that, all all thirty and a hundred and twenty staff may have some different. Philosophies about that. And if you're not in the classroom or not walking by the classroom. Uh so I want to be, I want to be clear that all the principals know clearly what the expectation is. And we were, we are monitoring that and addressing it, but.
I would also leverage this as an opportunity to remind the board, if you're hearing that. And you know of a specific school where that's a concern, if you would please let us know so that we can address it.
I, I just, I wanted to ask it to tonight. And if I hear of it again, I will let you know what school I hear it from, so. I just want to make it clear. So my next question, though. It, I want, have we had any student teachers recently? And are they teaching virtually as well and learning about these experiences? Because all these experiences that these teachers are having. I personally feel like, you know, virtual learning is not gonna go away, even if this virus goes away. We we've learned something and we've learned a lot about technology and. Uh uh we just had an experience a couple week uh weeks ago of people fussing because the kids didn't get a snow day. But you know, I look at it as a, as a blessing, you know, you, even if you have a snow day, you can't play out there all day. You might ha- might be able to have a little bit of virtual learning going on, even though you have a snow day. I mean, you could be at home virtually learning and still build a snowman.
We're supporting student teaching programs.
Okay, and they're getting this experience, because this is, this is a, I mean. This, there's so much learning going on with these teachers that I'm not sure I could go back into the classroom right now and do what they're doing. They have learned so much and I've observed so far three teachers teaching virtually. And I've been just totally amazed at how they're managing their classrooms and and the experiences that the chil- students are having. Thank you.
Mrs. Manning. Yes, I have several questions, but hopefully they'll be fast, so perhaps I can ask them all at once. Um, Ms. Weems actually took one of mine. I concur with Ms. Weems. I would like to see our um middle and high school students in school. More than two days a week. Um and especially our hands-on learning program, VOTAC, ATC, environmental studies. I think it's really important that we prioritize that. Um, so. Dr. Bergen um sent us some helpful information regarding the the cases. I'm not sure who can answer this question, uh probably Dr. Bergen since he sent it. Um, so it lists the week of January fourth through January tenth. It, it says that we had sixty-four students that had COVID, but I'm not aware of students being in the building. So what, how do we have sixty-four students that had COVID, but we didn't have students?
So those numbers are reported to us, remember, from the Department of Health. And so if they are aware they are a student in our system, they report that information. So even if they're out virtually, eh they're in virtual learning, we still get reported who their students are.
Okay, alright, great. So, so based upon that, um the numbers are looking great. So we had sixty-four students that week when we didn't have any students in school. And then the week of February first through February the seventh, we only had um forty-one students um that were tested positive. So kudos to um everyone. tested positive. So, kudos to everyone who is working so hard to, to mitigate this and get our students safely back to school. So, great job. Two more questions. What plans are being developed for graduation?
So, right now, we still have the convention center reserved for the large-scale graduations. We have until the, there's an early date in March, we need to let them know if we're going to hold those dates. And so, we're going to have schools have Plan A and Plan B. Plan A, we're going to do the large scale, because we can. Or Plan B, we're going to do some version of what we did last year. The principals met with their student activities coordinators immediately after graduation last year and did a reflection exercise. What do we really like, and what will we change, and we have to do it again? So, we'll know by the middle of March.
Okay, thank you. And then, looking ahead to next fall, what plans are you working on right now to get all students back to in-person learning?
It's, I'm going to say, say the same thing that I've said to Mrs. Weems relative to that, which is, looking ahead to next fall, we can't predict what the situation will look like. If all staff is vaccinated, and the Health Department says with all staff vaccinated, it's safe for all students to be back in school together, and we get that guidance, that will drive how we make plans to return to school in the fall. If we have different guidance, if something unanticipated happens, which we've seen over and over again in the last year, we may have a different set of plans. So, I mean, right now, we, we'd like to hope and believe that we'll all be back to school the way we normally open the school year. I certainly want that. I think most of us would love that, and we, but to, I don't have a crystal ball, so I can't look out and say, this is how it's going to look.
Okay. Thank you. And also, thank you, Dr. Robertson, for bringing up that you're going to be briefing us in a couple weeks on the extracurricular activities as well. We've gotten some questions about that. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, Mrs. Hughes.
Actually, I was going to ask about the non-athletic extracurriculars, but if we're already going to get briefed on that, then I can save that.
Okay. Mine's just a comment, really, the, the safety assessment sheet that I encourage all my colleagues to look at, you know, after the, when you get some time to really look through it. But obviously, a lot of thought went into it. And I, I can't escape mentioning, and I'm not trying to prioritize, but I know a lot of people who will be very happy to see number 21, contact tracing sign-in sheet, particularly those specialists who navigate many different classrooms. So, thank you for that. Ms. Owens, again?
Thank you. Actually, I did also have questions and, about the assessment sheet. Could, could you tell us just a little bit more about, like, how it's being used? I see that there's a spot for feedback received by the Office of Safe Schools. If you can tell us a little bit about, like, how that is used. And then also, some of the, the numbers, I will call them the numbers, how are they being kind of assessed, if you will? Like, masks are worn properly? Is that like, if you see one child with a mask not properly, you're just noting it? Are you looking and saying, well, out of a classroom of 20, I see 18, so we're giving it a check? Like, how are we using it? And is there a way to assess for progress, so that if you or anybody else in admin needed to look at four of these in a row from a school, that we're able to see progress in that feedback loop?
So, right now, the teams are conducting the assessments daily, and we are collecting these forms in our office, in the Office of Safe Schools. We just started this, so we are literally getting the paperwork in as we speak, and we are assessing the overall numbers of, of every, of all of the observations. We are encouraging our teams to point out to staff and admin concerns, and then they note them. So, then we will be going back with a follow-up assessment to make sure that they're following through with what they've, what they've seen and what they've observed. So, it's not a, it's not a gotcha. These are children, and masks slide and slip, and we have to have a, you know, an understanding that there's going to be some guidance that needs to happen, and some, some common sense. So, we're making sure that we have everything in place to be successful, and then giving them the opportunity to be successful when we see that there's a, a concern.
Yeah, and I'll add, there's a partnership here. So, when we determine who would be on these safety teams, we went and grabbed a phenomenal group of former and highly respected principals. We have a deputy fire chief, a retired senior chief from the U.S. Navy who had the highest clearance in his last job, and, and, and a, one of the highest respected coaches you could find in Virginia Beach. They received training, and then we decided, as an added piece, and this was Mr. Freeman, let's keep the same school, same team with the same school throughout. So, I know what the benchmark was the first time I went. I know when I go back to that school, because that's one of my schools, the areas that were challenging. I'm going to go right back and look for those areas. I want to hear from the principal what they've done about it, and so they can immediately know and look for that sequence and progression. We get updated in my, on my team from Safe Schools every week. Here's the, what we saw, here are some things we want you to reiterate in your weekly check-in meetings. So, I think this is going to pay huge dividends over the next several weeks.
The initial report is overwhelming compliance at this point.
Great. Can I, okay. One of the things that, I'm not sure if it's just not on here specifically, and it's something that you all look at, or if it's something that maybe this will be a evolving kind of process, continuous improvement process, is the gymnasium and the spacing during gym time, you know, with activity going on, and we having the increased distancing, and then kind of building from that. When we talked about the 15-minute cumulative exposures, you mentioned the desks around, which definitely, as a parenting a first grader, my first thought is, whoever her two best friends are, every time you line up for lunch or line up for anything, there's going to be, I'm trying to stand next to that person. When I go to recess, I'm trying to be in their face. When we go to the gym, that's the friend I'm going to play with. And is it, is there something that helps track those things, because it's not the same teacher? And, you know, because you got the PE teacher, whatever's going on with recess, those kind of things, just so that we're trying to track as, as best as we can, given an imperfect situation?
So, I am really glad you asked that question, because we're going to make, we've, we identified that this week as a challenge in a couple of schools, because we had inclement weather. And so, they were trying to put three classes in a gym. You can't put three classes in a gym and have those kids six feet apart, because in the gym, you have to be six feet apart. So, my team, I tasked, we had, we met on my, my team on Monday. I said, by Thursday, in our Dr. Spence's executive leadership team meeting, I need to be able to present a solution to Dr. Spence on what we're going to do about PE and recess and inclement weather. I'm saying that to you, because you guys are going to hear from parents saying, my kid didn't get recessed today. My kid didn't get PE today. What are you people thinking? All right? And what I'm saying is, there's going to be situations where, because of the weather outside, classes will not get recess, they will not get PE on the day they're supposed to get it, because of the physical distancing restrictions. So, the principals are coming up with an alternative solution. We're calling them brain breaks. We're going to do some really fun brain, it's going to be PE brain exercises, basically. And we're going to look at some other larger spaces, like your music room or your art room or something like that. So, we're going to come up with something to share with Dr. Spence for his approval and review on Thursday. But I'm glad you asked, because I already told the team, well, I know what's going to happen. We're going to have to have a form letter together to send home to the parents to say, hey, sorry, today your kid didn't get health and PE or recess, and this is because, this is why. So, we will do that, but no good deed goes unpunished. We'll see.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. I just want to point out, you, you might be the first time anybody's ever said, Ms. Owens, I'm so happy you asked the question. But if, as you're looking at that, I appreciate that you're looking at creative solutions. I understand that we're going to have to, you know, I'm super pro-recess, but that we're going to have to look at some other options of how that looks and what's, how we're exercising those things. I, I do have concerns, and hope that'll be a continuous conversation with Department of Health about the spacing in the gym. My understanding is that six foot is, you know, ideal for sitting and eating and not doing physical activity where you're exerting and breathing and doing those extra things, but that the recommendations when you are exercising is farther than six feet. And so, that might just be a continuous conversation. Maybe it doesn't apply to small children, and I don't know, not, you know, VDH, but, you know, just something to continuously...
Did anybody else have a question? I just wanted to check in with our colleague, Mrs. Holtz, who's just down the hallway, just to make sure there were no technology glitches or anything, that she didn't have any questions.
Okay, looks like we're down here, so I'll just, you know, it's just great to get this report from the first week of school, and we look forward to the next phase. And our, and a reminder to the public that we have next week is one, is, this is with it being budget season, we, we have another budget workshop next week, beginning at 5:00, and that will be followed by also the, another public hearing on the budget. So, with that, we are, this meeting is adjourned, and everybody stay safe and well.